Closed session, this is our regular meeting for May the 4th, 2015 for the City of Crescent City, City Council. Do we have anything to report out of closed session?
No actions to report this evening.
Thank you. So again, we will call roll.
Councilmember Holly?
Here.
Councilmember Inscore?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Pro Temenia?
Here.
Mayor Gasno?
Here.
And Pro Temenia will lead us in the flags. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right, you can't see the flag when I'm in the way. Okay, first on our agenda, item number one is acknowledgement of May 2015 as Older Americans Month to be received by, well, actually Diane's not here. She is here. Oh hello, come on up to the podium, I'll read this acknowledgement and give it to you. Thank you for being here. I am glad that you're feeling better. Okay, so I'll read this acknowledgement. City of Crescent City acknowledgement of Older Americans Month 2015. Whereas the City of Crescent City includes a thriving community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas the City of Crescent City is committed to helping all individuals live longer, healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible, and whereas since 1965, the Older Americans Act has provided services that help older adults remain healthy and independent by complementing existing medical and healthcare systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and supporting some of life's most basic functions such as bathing or preparing meals. And whereas these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of Native American elders, and whereas we recognize the value of community engagement and service in helping older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to the others, and whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Please say it. Now therefore, the City Council, the City of Crescent City does hereby acknowledge May 2015 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You can say a few words too, but. Is her microphone on? Oh, that's it. You want to say anything?
Well, you know, there's not much to say other than we're out there and we're still doing stuff.
And that's great.
Watch out.
And.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're next going on to the consent calendar. Number two, approval of the regular meeting minutes from April 20th, 2015 council meeting. Receive and file the warrant claims list for April 11th, 2015 through April 24th, 2015. Receive and file the biweekly payroll report for the periods ending on April 18th, 2015, paid on April 24th, 2015. Approve and authorize city manager to sign the Adams-Ashley Group LLC, AAG, 12-month contract extension to provide administrative support services for the state Community Development Block Grant, CBDG, program in an amount of $48,000. Consider and confirm Angela Glor as the public commissioner for the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority as the public member. Seven, consider and approve the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority annual budget for fiscal year 2015-2016. And number eight, consider and approve resolution number 2015-17, a resolution amending the list of personnel who are authorized to issue administrative citations pursuant to Crescent City ordinance number 732. Okay, is there any discussion?
Public comment?
Yep. Public comment on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing no public comment, close that, and we'll come back to the council.
Mayor Gasno, I'd like to pull item number six for discussion.
Okay, we will pull item number six. Is there a motion for any of the other items to be passed?
No, I just wanted to comment about how pleased I am that we are reducing Adams-Ashley Group and we're going to be doing much of that work internally. So I appreciate your coming up to speed on that, and I know that was the plan and you're following through, so thank you for that.
I'll move for approval of items two, three, four, five, seven, and eight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion and a second? Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Inscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Pro Temenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and we will now discuss item number six, consider and confirm Angela Glor as the public commissioner for the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority as the public member. Mr. Ania.
I just wanted to add a couple of comments on why I'm going to vote no on this, on this confirming of the public member. Three years ago, when I was on the Solid Waste Authority, in fact, it was a 10-member board, the year before that, we decided because of all the detail, actually, we didn't decide by a vote, it was a consensus at the time, that we wanted to get a business owner on that as an advisory person, and we did that, and this time, we do not have a business member on there. We haven't, Solid Waste has an important function to go. In fact, this report, this final report, next week will be one year, and there's been no action taken on it, on where Solid Waste is going. And to appoint a brand-new member at this point, that has no business experience for one thing, because that's what we said we were going to do, and to start them brand-new, I see Mr. Ward in the audience there, he's been our acting director for almost two years and a few months. He's doing two jobs, and you know, he doesn't have the time to do all this stuff, and so I just think changing right now, when you're so close to getting this stuff done, is wrong, but more importantly, we do not have a member of our, a business owner on that committee, and that's what we said we were going to do. It's a different board, but that is just, that's my comments.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to comment then. Yes, it was, it was, it was great to have Ms. Wilson on the board as a business member, but I think philosophically, we need to stop and think why we have community members appointed to the board. It didn't mean that there always is the person mostly representing the business community. This time, we have a member of the community that may represent other factors. She does have grant experience, she knows how government works, I believe she has a doctorate. I mean, this is, this, Ms. Glor was the unanimous choice of those of us at the Solid Waste Board, and I think she'll come up to speed very quickly. So we did have, we did have public interviews, we had written information, and it was, it's, it's always a difficult thing to make selections in public, but while I appreciate the efforts of Ms. Wilson in the time, in the two years that she was on it, I think Ms. Glor will bring something different and positive to the board, so I would recommend that we go forward and approve this.
All right, do I have a motion? Or have more comments?
Yes, I was not in favor of necessarily having a business owner, and I don't believe that the, having Ms. Wilson on the board was necessarily a positive thing. And in fact, I voted no both times on the council to approve her appointment, so I respectfully disagree with Mr. Ania on that statement that he said that we all agreed to have a business member on the board. So do we need to ask for a public comment on this first?
You already asked for a public comment.
Okay, all right, with that, I will make a motion to approve Angela Glor as the public member for the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority.
And do I have a second?
I have a question first.
Sure.
Sorry. I thought I read someplace in this that if there is, if there is any objection, then the appointment can't be made. Was I mistaken in reading that somewhere?
No, it's usually if there's any objection from one of the parties of the joint powers. So if the city didn't vote for it, then it wouldn't happen.
Okay, so that, the objection would be the city as a whole, not a, not a, not a specific member?
No.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Did I get that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
There we go. We have a motion and a second for item number six, can you please pull?
I don't think we had public comment on.
We had public comment.
We had public comment on the consent calendar, but.
We didn't have on this particular item.
No, we didn't have. Should we have public comment on this particular item since it's a discussion?
Yeah, I don't recall if, if the item was pulled before you asked for public comment on the consent calendar, so if you'd like to open it up again.
Sure, I will, I will open up item number six, considering confirm Angela Glor as the public commissioner to public comment. Is there any public comment? Please.
Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Henry, I live in the county, and I faithfully attend Solid Waste Authority meetings, and I think, well, next month, there'll be two years, and I don't think I've missed one. So I wanted to make a comment on the public member. Every time that there's been an opening, there have been six or seven people that have applied for that position. This time, there were nine until three dropped out. I think that shows a real interest on the part of the public, which will just diminish if we keep reappointing the same person over and over again, and I don't think there should be any entrenched public person on that board. It should be changing, because this community has a lot of elements in it, and I think we need fresh ideas, and here's somebody who's very knowledgeable in the area of food, which is one of the major big things that the state's looking at as far as recycling. How do we recycle food waste? Because it's really hard to treat. And so we've got somebody on board who's going to be right up to speed on that, so the other, and I wouldn't have said anything about the R3 consultings, but Councilmember Ania brought that up. I think frankly, it's been the majority, three-person majority on that board all of last year, and that was Supervisor Sullivan, public member Wilson, and Chair, Mr. Gitlin, that prevented anything from happening and dragged out a whole year of non-action. Nothing's happened yet because there've been, you know, waiting to fill all the positions. They're filled now, and I think, I'm hoping very much that there will be some activity and the problems will be resolved, but I don't think you can say that, you know, it was just allowed to lay there by all members of the board. I'm looking at two people here who I know wanted to move ahead in some way and weren't able to, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, we will close public comment on that, and we do have a motion and a second. Could we please, any more discussion from the board? Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Inscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Council, or Pro Temenia?
No.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, that passes forward one, and we are now on to reports and presentations. Number nine, introduction of Django, new City of Crescent City Police Department K-9 officer, Mr. Palazzo.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Chief Minzal to present this item.
Chief, how you doing tonight?
Very good, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. It does give me great pleasure to introduce the newest member of our department, so I'm going to go up and get Officer King, the other half, the more senior partner, and I'll let him continue on with the demonstration and introduction to the, to our council. Give me a second, sir.
All right, thank you.
I was fortunate enough to already meet Django. I went to an explorers' meeting about a week and a half ago, and they were talking about K-9 units and searches with the explorers, and Django made sure to slobber all over my pants and say hello. It was really nice, a very nice dog, so.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, Officer King and Django. Accompanying with them is Officer Gene Bertruda and Aries, here to support their new partner, so Officer King, please come on down.
So I, sir, shall let Django speak.
Okay. Well, this is Django. Django's 14 months old. We got him from a vendor from Germany via the, our trainers, Ingles in Ventura. We spent five weeks on there on handler protection, tracking, apprehension training. He is post-certified. It was a five-week course. And he is a puppy, there's a lot of puppy in him, but he's a good dog. He's gonna, he'll do everything we need him for, and he's going to work out great. And there's some questions we often get answered or asked at demos are, what does he eat? I tell him dog food. He does come home with me, I get that asked a lot. I am responsible for his care and maintenance and all that. So yeah, that's about it.
All right, any questions from the council? All right. Thank you for introducing us to Django. Looked for many years for him serving the force with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, he's a very nice dog. He lets you pet him around the ears and all that good stuff. Okay, now we're on to communications, public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public comment. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? They can comment also. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment, and we will go on our agenda. Public hearings, we have none. Continuing business, number 10, authorize the city manager to sign a, the Shoreline RV Park renovation contract change order, CCO, number 003, to provide and install RG6 underground cable, fiberglass Wi-Fi boxes, and acre bolts, and construct the infrastructure for an additional space in the amount of $18,745.75. And B of this is adopt resolution number 2015-18, rescinding resolution number 2015-05, and approving a line of credit from the general fund in the amount of $230,000, excuse me. Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor, members of council, we're almost there. They're moving fast and furious to get the construction completed. Mr. Weir is here. Want to say a few things or a few comments to this? Just to present this item, and hopefully, we can have a ribbon cutting here in the next couple of weeks.
I know, I'm kind of bummed, my drone crashed, and so I had to send it back, so I haven't got any aerial photos recently of what's been constructed, so.
Those photos are, are pretty neat and gives perspective to the project, and I think it could be a tool that we can use on future projects, especially if we can time, you know, some of those photos as the project goes on. But, but yes, this, so what's before tonight is contract change order number three. But to take the council back a little bit, just to reflect on the project, this, this project in the, in itself was originally a $2 million project, and so I think it is important to take a glance back and realize that the city only received about $777,000 with a grant, and we had a reserve balance of about $158,000. So the $230,000 line of credit was really needed, one, to complete the project, and then two, to cover a lot of the anticipated extras that we needed for the project, like design of the project, purchasing of electrical boxes, and improving our service to the park up to a 2,400 amp service with the Pacific Power and Light cable system design and startup, as well as the hydro seed, which we'll talk about here in a minute. But what's before you tonight is change order number three. So change order number one was a lot of the unforeseen's that we found in the project. That's when the contractor encountered the 45-foot-long by, by five-to-10-foot diameter log. It was the sewer force main that we found that was in horrible condition, so we replaced that, doing the things that we should do. Change order number two, that was the addition of conduit for the Wi-Fi system, as well as the cable TV system. And then change order number three is a little bit of how the, hopefully, the last change order that we have in this project, and part of it is how we decided to implement the cable system. So we're going to work with a cable provider to install the head-in system and provide sort of the basic components that we need for the satellite TV. We decided to separate it out and have the electrical contractor actually pull the cable wire. So he pulled 8,500 feet of cable wire, which is included in this contract change order. And then the other portion of this is the infrastructure to add an additional space. The original park had somewhere over 190 spaces, it was reduced down to 89 per this design. We found space for one more. So that's the other piece of this. So if you look at the map of the RV park, this is a map that you will see something similar, that'll be hanging in the Shoreline.
Eric, when, when will that take root though? If you open the following week? I mean, is it grass already, or is it going to take time to grow?
It's not grass. What it is, is it's a mulch-type compound that they actually spray, apply with a special truck that they have, and it's a, it's a wood fiber, paper fiber type mulch that'll go down, and it's got a bright green color to it, so it'll look green. It's non-staining, so people need to stay off of it, you know, if, if they're going to be camping, they can't tramp through it, just like normal grass. You have to stay off it for a couple of weeks. So we'll have signs up and whatnot, but you don't have to worry about that bright green being tracked into your, into your RV. That was one concern that we had.
So you're figuring a couple of weeks.
It'll take a couple of weeks for it to take root, and then the first mow isn't scheduled until about six weeks.
Then after that, it'll be okay.
And then after that, it'll be okay.
Six weeks?
Six weeks, until you mow it, you need to stay off it for about three to four, is what we're going to try.
So that's going to be just before the 4th of July?
That's, yes.
Okay.
That's the, that's the timing of it. To, to show the intricacies of the cable system, this was the cable map, and you can see that the pink lines are the main runs, and then all those little purple lines are all separate home runs to each of the cable components. And then Fritz's Wi-Fi system that he came up with is this design here. And so again, you have to have separate infrastructure, separate backbones, they each have to be spaced a certain distance apart with a certain radius. But that is, in a nutshell, what change order three is about, and why we need some additional funds to finish up this project.
And that's not too bad, only having three change orders.
It's, no, the, the, the project has went well, all things considered. You know, the location of it, where it's at, the high groundwater, from my opinion, we were fortunate to have a good contractor that worked with us through, through a lot of things throughout the project. It's been a good relationship, and then also just the combined effort with some of the things that we took on as a city and trying to get it finalized and get a very functional park.
So one more thing, Eric, you mentioned the camping part, I didn't see where it was on the map for the, for the camping itself.
You know, there's not going to be a designated camping area that's just for tents. It's really, a camper could rent any of these spaces.
Oh, okay.
Is, is how it's set up now.
Okay.
And they'll have their, their own patio with their own little landscaped area right beside it, just like an RV or anything else would.
Okay.
Area, you know, typically, the campers don't have restroom facilities, so they'll be more in the.
Closer to the bathrooms?
Yeah.
Could be in this area.
I have one other question. I just, if, maybe it's a comment more than it is a question, if we're going to invest $13,000 to do this, approximately, to do this hydro seeding, are we, are, and it's, and it's relatively important to keep people off of it, if we're putting that investment in there, do we really think that, that pushing to get the place open is going to create enough revenue that we think we have to do that at the expense of if they, you can put up signs anywhere you want to, but I'm just, I'm just concerned that if we're making this investment so that we can get this grass going, in a, especially given our unique circumstances, that we're not investing this extra money, and then open up the park, and then find out that the signs didn't mean anything to people, and they traipse it all over it, and we're going back having to try to reseed this grass because we were pushed against a deadline that we control? So I, it's just an observation that I'm sure you've already thought of, but.
Well, definitely a concern, you know, as far as the grass grows, keeping people off is important for, for the seed not to be damaged and to germinate. If people did get on, you probably wouldn't lose the, you know, the entire investment, the majority would still come about. There would be areas, though, that you might have to reseed. One of the, the key points that we're trying to focus on is that, that May 15th date, which is opening efficient season, so that's, that's where we were trying to get the park open for that, but it is a concern.
And, you know, there is the other option of not hydro seeding now and wait until the fall, you know, and that was the other, but then you have a park that has a lot of dust.
We don't want to leave dirt.
Yeah, and a lot of dirt, and so, you know, we're.
Yeah.
You know, we're, you know, the option here is to, you know, I think hydro seed and then, you know, put up some signs, you know, have our camp hosts, you know, work with the, you know, the RVers, and educate and inform, and hopefully, we can get this grass.
Well, I'm sorry. Hopefully, the, the, that initial users of the park will be fishermen and, and school's still going, so you're not talking about a lot of families in there, I just, and I know you guys have factored all in, I just, it's like, let's get it, you know, with, with all the things that gone through with this, it's like, let's just get it right first time if we can, so. But I appreciate all the work, you guys have done a great job.
Exactly, and you know, as far as all the work goes, you know, city staff, contractor, this has been a, quite an involved project, and so, you know, everyone does deserve a lot of credit for it, so hopefully, it's success.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And I'd, I'd put on your signs that it actually does stain, and they'll stay off permanently.
It eats through shoes.
That's right, this grass will stain your stuff and track into your mobile homes. Please stay off of it, then they will.
Then they probably would, probably a good point.
Tell them that it's, it detracts fish. Tell them that it detracts fish. It's a fish repellent. Don't get near it.
You know, I've heard some comments about a grand opening or something like that, but this hydroseeding will kind of put that off. I mean, we're not gonna do a big grand opening just before the Fourth of July where the community is invited down there to see the facility or, any thoughts on that?
I mean, the timing near the Fourth would be better as far as the grass and the landscape goes as it's starting to get to the point that we can mow it. It's one of those, you know, one of those decisions that, you know, council...
Soft opening.
You could do something like that and then have your ribbon cutting once you have more of the landscape. And then also, you know, it's important to recognize, too, that this isn't a done project. You know, the original project was scoped at two million, and so, there is still the idea of a phase-two with paving the roads and getting the drainage completed.
The only other question I have is, we have fewer spaces. Do people that come year after year usually make reservations a year in advance? And what did you do? You're gonna have to turn people away? I'm just curious about how you manage that.
We've had to bump some reservations, you know, starting in May one. And, you know, if we don't open next week, you know, by the fifteenth, we're gonna have to bump some others and they'll go to other parks. So, you know, it's kind of more on the grand opening. And part of that concept was to educate our community on what we can provide, whether we do it now or maybe we do it in August, September, you know, after the season's over. Then, you know, we still have, you know, some beautiful weather here to bring the community down there, you know, putting on my business hat. You know, we'd like to get our paying customers in there, you know, once the summer starts. Hopefully, we can, you know, get some higher occupancy, you know, come fall. It might be where we offer that to the community. So, I need to talk to staff about that, but those ideas are out there so we can, you know, at least educate the community on what we have to offer. I think it's a good idea.
All right. Thank you, Eric. I will now open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on the change order for the Shoreline RV Park? Seeing no public comment, I'm gonna bring it back. We need to do this in two parts. Is that correct? Okay. So, we'll need a motion on the first one, A, authorize city manager to sign the Shoreline RV Park renovation contract change order. Anyone?
Okay. I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the Shoreline RV Park renovation project contract change order, CCO number zero-zero-three, to provide and install RG6 underground cable, fiberglass Wi-Fi boxes, anchor bolts, and construct the infrastructure for an additional RV space in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any more discussion on the council? Nope. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
ProTemenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes. All right. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And then we go on to B. Anybody wanna give me a motion for B?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we adopt resolution number two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, resolution, rescinding resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero-five and approving a line of credit from the general fund in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Enscore?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
ProTemenia?
Yes.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes. And that passes unanimously. We go on to our next thing, new business we have done, and we're coming down to the end of our agenda. City council items, any legislative matters? No?
Well, we actually, Councilmember Murray and I attended last week to the League of California Legislative Session on Wednesday. Councilmember Murray, do you wanna comment about that?
Well, I learned a lot. It was a great opportunity to meet with both Senator McGuire and Assemblyman Wood. There were, it was an action-packed day, and I believe you all got the agenda. But we heard from several legislators on different bills that they had, they were proposing. One was on, from Senator Jim Beall, on SB sixteen and then SB three-twenty-one, the transportation bills. And then we heard from Assemblymember Ken Cooley on the progress of his AV two-sixty-six, the medical marijuana bill that he's, has going through the assembly. And then we heard from, I don't know if she, no, she didn't do her presentation. And then we had Assemblyman David Chu on the Affordable Housing Funding Package. And then we had a very special policy summit on the environmental impacts and public safety arising from the illegal marijuana grows at the state Capitol. And that was an actually very packed audience that was in that room. And we had both Senator McGuire and Assemblyman Wood talk on that topic with their, they have, each have bills going through their, each of their, the Senate and the Assembly. And I wanted to give out recognition to our legislative, our League of California Cities, Sarah Rounds was very responsible for making this summit possible. And then Mark Wheatley from Arcata, part of our Redwood Empire Division. And I, we should be very proud of being part of the Redwood Empire Division and pushing through that resolution last year at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, which has got the whole ball rolling. But it was a very informative summit on the environmental impacts and the public safety issues on these illegal marijuana grows. We learned a lot at the summit, and we also learned quite a bit at the conference last year. So, that was very informative and I felt like we, it was value for us attending. And then we heard some more information on some bills that are going through on economic development, and those are kind of young.
Catherine, did anybody speak about the proposed bill on the right-to-rest bill, where people can sleep in our city parks, sleep on our public sidewalks because it's public? That hasn't made the bill yet. I guess it's still...
It hasn't made, yeah, and there was some discussion on that. I was talking to, I think, Ms. Rounds on that. And there's somebody else in that conversation. And that hasn't, you know, surfaced.
It's a committee, then.
Yeah, it sounds like it's dead, which is good. I don't think there's a lot of cities that are out there and supporting that.
Because that would really affect our parks.
Yes.
Our sidewalks. It would affect everything, not only in our town, but every city.
It would be, would not be very beneficial to, you know, all of our communities.
I think Mark Wheatley brought that up.
Maybe Mark.
But that wasn't anything that was on the radar for the Action Day that we had. And then we both, we had the opportunity to meet with Senator McGuire in his office and Assemblyman Wood in his office and talk to him, both of them at the Capitol Building. So, that was, that was quite a, quite a day.
And it was a good opportunity to meet with their staff and kind of see where their offices are. You know, both Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire are working on, you know, several different bills. They both asked us if we can take a look into a couple of bills that they're, you know, I guess, writing at this point. One, Senator McGuire's Thriving Communities and Sharing Economy Act, and it's in regards to transit occupancy tax with vacation rentals. So, I asked them, you know, I have a copy of what they're proposing, and I'm gonna kind of research that and work with our league to take a look at that. And then Assemblyman Wood asked us to take a look at a bill that he's writing in regards to CDBG and the process with CDBG. And, you know, I said, I'd absolutely like to take a look at that one and make any comments. So, I'm gonna review that with our staff and probably our Adams Ashby group that we work with as well to kind of get their input on that. So, yeah, I'd like to ask council, you know, my discretion, if I can work with these bills and just make a comment to the Assemblyman and Senator. I don't know what their timing is. I didn't get that from them. A lot of times, they're like to turn these around fairly quickly. But I like to, you know, take a couple of days, take a look at them, then get back to them on our comments or on our staff comments, if that's okay with the council. But it was a good, it was a good session, good, very informative to be there and to see, you know, kind of the different cities that were there and the speakers, you know, on these different bills. So, it was very informative.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that for our city. Any other legislative matters?
I don't believe so.
Nope. All right. City manager report?
Just real quick, in your packet, you have an updated project list. We're gonna try and get that to the council on a quarterly basis or so, just to kind of keep that updated. And as I go through new projects through the budget, we'll add to that, you know, so you can kind of keep us accountable on, you know, our budget items. And so, you'll see that, you know, kind of grow and expand as we get projects done. Also, we're working on a letter, and I don't know if it got completed yet, a thank you letter for the mayor to sign to the association or community group that did the community cleanup on two Saturdays ago. I believe that was. It was, I wasn't able to make it, but it was good attendance, I hear. A lot of hard work was completed. And, you know, things like that are very beneficial to our community, to get the different community groups out there to help us, you know, just kind of clean up the community, you know, pull the weeds, and we really appreciate all that help.
All right. I'll definitely sign that, once it comes across your desk for me to sign.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I just make a comment on the projects list? What really jumps out at me are the, how little general fund dollars are spent on these projects. We're talking about seventy-two thousand, sixty-eight thousand, twelve thousand, all the way up to six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand and two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. All those are grant funds, and anyone can look at this. But I want to thank city staff for limiting the impacts on the general fund and yet getting all these important projects completed.
The grants are very important to us, you know, as a small community, and we do what we can to get those.
All right. Any other, anything else to report? Okay. Now, we're on the reports and serves referrals, council travel and training reports. Who wants to start? Blake, you look busy down there.
I don't have an awful lot to report. I was gone on vacation during, since our last meeting, but I did come back, which is always good. I would just comment as part of, along with Councilmember Murray, we have been working with members of the Board of Supervisors as well as the Healthcare District to address the importance of healthcare in our community. We continue to see that, and I know the community is concerned about that. And I just, I want to reassure our community that we are looking at those things and we, it is important to us. It's not something that we're unaware of, but we're trying to look at this from the standpoint of what is best for our community and how can we work together, multiple partners, our hospital, our healthcare district, our county, our city, everyone, working together to provide the very best services for our community. And so, we've spent quite a bit of time with that, and we're really taking that very seriously. And I guess I just want the community to know that we are working for your benefit. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Catherine?
Let's see. So, after we met last time, I had a conference call on the coastal cities where we're working on the sea level rise still and the local coastal plans. I attended the Delnard Solid Waste Authority meeting and the Raising of America here at the Flynn Center. That was on the twenty-first. And that was quite an enlightening video that I saw on the issue of young children and setting policy here in our community on how we can address and help to raise healthy children, which we sometimes forget that we're the policymakers here and what we can do in little ways. So, that was, that was very informative. And then that Friday, I attended the floral show with all the local wildflowers and even the invasive species over at the fairgrounds. And then the local art walk with a lot of children's art, which was terrific. And I really want to thank the local vendors, especially the Gallery of Arts and Cultures, which had a great display of the children's art, and the floral show did as well at the fairgrounds for that. And then I met with Charlie Helms. I was sort of an emissary for the harbor and took a request to both Senator McGuire and Wood for them to meet with the harbor master on the permitting issue for the dredging materials at the harbor they're still having. They don't need to get the permit, but the people who are receiving the dredging materials need that. So, I met with him on that issue. And we had a special Transportation Commission meeting with Caltrans later that day. And then I sat in at the LAFCO meeting for Mr. Enscore because he was on vacation. I hadn't been to one of those meetings for a while. And then, of course, I attended the Legislative Action Day at the state Capitol later that week. And then we had the Healthcare District meeting earlier today with our colleagues from the Board of Supervisors. And I just wanted to say that, Mr. Mayor, that I heard on NPR because they've had so many issues surrounding law enforcement and in Baltimore, that mayor is also a verb. So, you need to be mayering around the town.
I do try to get out. Mr. Holly?
Okay. Don't mayor me, please. Okay. Solid Waste Management Authority did meet, and as you've already discussed here, there was a public member selected. And so, the senior center had a board meeting, actually, the annual meeting of the senior center occurred on the twenty-ninth. And I declined to be chair, but I did agree to be vice chair of the organization. So, I'll be increasingly busy with the senior center. And then on Wednesday, as the city representative, I know Catherine will be there as the, as the Transportation Commission representative, we're attending the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders meeting that'll be all day Wednesday. And I think we have those kind of scheduled out all the way through summer. So, it'll happen once a month, and so, I'm very anxious to see how that goes.
Thank you. Mayor ProTemen?
Well, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge a letter that we all received from the Area One, Area One Agency on Aging, who supports the Delnard Monument Committee's construction of the local monument intended to honor our community veterans. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that they, they support it. I attended the Women's Club one-hundredth anniversary luncheon for Mayor Gasno, and that was, that was very nice. There was a lot of, there was a lot of ladies there and that, you know, a hundred-years-old group is probably the oldest one in town.
Not the ladies, but the group, right?
The women, the women's club, not the ladies.
The club, yes. Thank you.
But it's the oldest organization that I know about in town, and they just do all kinds of good work. And so, it was, it was a pleasure to do that. Also, went to our chamber board meeting last week, also LAFCO. And on, I think it was Friday, I attended the Little Caesar's Pizza official grand opening. I kind of thought that I'd been to two others, but this was the official Chamber of Commerce ribbon-cutting ceremony. I think I said that right.
Did you get anything free?
Free slice of pizza.
There you go.
If you wanted. Anyway, that's, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. I was at the Delnord Solid Waste Management Authority meeting also with Mr. Holly. And like I mentioned earlier, on the twenty-third, I went to an explorers' meeting at the police department, and that's where I met Django and a bunch of the kids. One of the kids is in my class and invited me to go by there, so I said, okay, I'll do it. And if you can, with the chief's permission, of course, you know, with okay, and also talk, talk to Officer Gill and, you know, some of the board members or the council members should stop by an explorers' meeting and see what they're doing. Yeah. And they definitely enjoy it. And they really like it when you bring cookies. That is a good thing to do. So, always bring cookies. Yes, sir? Open invitation to the station anytime we want. Thank you, sir. We'll take that up. Let's see. I recorded an OES message that should be hitting the radio here pretty soon about our joint operation practice coming up on June fifteenth between the city, county, and other organizations. I think the state's involved with that, too. And then on the second, I attended the... And then on the second, I attended the small business chamber mixer on Saturday at the Mason's Hall and it was very well attended by everybody, including businesses, probably about maybe two dozen businesses there and a few of them I didn't know about, which was great and I was able to get around and talk to them. And they also had the small business challenge where they had like about eight businesses go up in sort of a Shark Tank kind of way and pitch their businesses and how they're going to expand in our community. And then the one who won was Redwood Rides, which is, they give, well, they don't give, but they, they, they're businesses to give rides out on horses, beach rides and forest rides. So they're trying to expand that and it's one of the businesses, you never know they're there, but they're on the internet and like all the rest of the businesses that did not have storefronts, this was the place where they could get known. So a lot of great businesses there. And hopefully we'll see them a lot more and they can do some more of these larger small business chamber mixers. And other than that, I think that's about it. So, oh, I just want to also say, everybody should come out on the 9th and support the J.C.'s as they run the mother of all 5Ks again. And I think they are supporting this year, I can't remember who they're supporting, I forget. Last year they supported CASA and then I think they're going to do another organization this year. I forget which one it is.
Walk, bike and roll.
Oh, so they're, oh, walk, bike and roll to school? On Wednesday, the 6th. So everybody always be careful and watch out for our young kids walking, biking on their safe routes to school on the 6th. So, are you guys, any of you guys going to be out there?
Yes.
I already be at school, so it doesn't matter. Okay, if there's nothing else coming before this council on the journalist meeting, to our next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, which will be, oh, May 18th. Thank you very much. There it is. Everybody have a good evening.